I'll take it. We'll open up this committee meeting with the Committee of the Whole, discussion on a conditional use permit by Zach Brothers. This was regarding 1815 Bitter Lane, specifically regarding the updates to requests made after October 12th, 2021, City Council Appeal. What we got speaking on this? Zach?
I wasn't sure how this works. So I can just read the revised plan.
Yeah, just give us a good, give everybody a good sense of what changes you're asking for and what where we're at, what the committee's going to consider tonight.
Okay. Well, and with some of the neighbors here, I'd like to read a statement real quick. So I wanted to thank all who've been involved in the process of determining the feasibility of allowing public camping on the land at 1815 Bitter Lane. And I'm thankful to those who are for the project, and I can appreciate the concerns of those who are against. I believe camping is a positive and healthy activity, and I believe the beauty of Fitzgerald Mountain and the proximity to the trails makes the subject property a good fit. Based on the feedback of the neighbors, the Planning Commission, the City Council, and others, I'm withdrawing my request to allow public tent camping. At this time, I plan to limit camping, the camping part, to personal use, but pursue a conditional use permit to allow two self-contained RV parking spots. Since the overwhelming concern seems to be about sanitation issues, I plan to do a feasibility study for an onsite restroom. So the changes, as stated, I'm only asking to rent out two camper van/RV sites. They would be 26 feet max, so the smaller ones, and I'm only asking for four people max per vehicle, so that would only be eight people.
Still no trailers?
No trailers, no trailers. And I can read through all, I tried to get everything down on paper that we discussed last time. And I just want to say, this should alleviate the sanitation concerns. I've been talking to the onboarding manager at hipcamp.com, and they sent this statement for me to read. They said, "If you aren't able to offer a toilet option right away, you can make your listing an RV only, as RVs are self-contained." So my operation plan is to rent these two camper van spots on a nightly basis, no more than five continuous nights, four people max per vehicle, that I would use an online booking platform such as HipCamp or Explore Eden was another one I brought up, a platform that holds guests and hosts, myself, to certain standards, and requires the guest to acknowledge rules set by myself prior to booking that states the check-in and checkout procedures. And I did put some links to HipCamp's, both camper standards and host standards, if anybody needed to click on those. The rules that I will put on the platform are to include van campers/RVs 26-foot max in length, no trailers, no tent sites. This site is primitive and has no restroom facilities. Van campers/RVs must have a self-contained toilet option. There is no dumpster onsite, and all trash must be packed out. There is one approved fire pit, and guests must agree to check the following website and make sure there are no burn bands in either Benton County or Washington County. The website's pretty simple, www.arcfireinfo.org/m. I'll have that, I'm planning on doubling up on a lot of these rules, both onsite but also sign, I'm sorry, on the website but also physically onsite, so that the guests won't have any questions. But also with fire, because I know that's been a big concern. Fire must be contained within the fire pit. Guests shall attempt to keep the flame at two feet or lower. Guests will agree to use the provided wood only or wood pieces that are no longer than two feet. Guests may gather dead wood that is onsite and on the ground, and must stay within the boundaries of the camp property. I'll provide a fire extinguisher and a rain barrel with a hose that'll be at the metal barn that's 17 feet south of the fire pit. They must acknowledge to avoid private property by staying on Fitzgerald Mountain Trails or within the Fitzgerald Mountain Camp boundaries. The boundaries will be marked by Bitter Lane and the goat farm that's north of Bitter Lane. There's a fence there, there's a fence to the south, and there will be signs on Butterfield Trail, since there isn't any fencing that crosses Butterfield Trail. I have to acknowledge that the site's located in the city limits of Springdale, and the city required quiet hours are between 11:00 PM and 7:00 AM. And I've also said that I'll have onsite signs designating the arrival to the property, so they know where the property starts, to have onsite tags that they must fill out with their reservation name and date, and they'll post those at their site, to have onsite signs designated both the north and south edges of the property from Butterfield Trail, and to have onsite signs at the fire pit that reiterate safety instructions and alert the guests to the location of the fire extinguisher and the rain barrel with the hose. The site plan is very simple. It just shows the two 20-by-40-foot camper/RV spots. They will be 40 feet long, but the max I'm allowing is 26 feet. There's one trail that connects those two spots up to the Butterfield Trail, and then just the one fire pit. And that's it.
So if there were any other changes later on, let's say you've got this part up and running, and then you wanted to look at adding restrooms or something like that, what does that process look like? Patsy, do you go to the Planning Commission?
Basically, you'd be changing the conditions of the conditional use.
Patsy, he talked about the noise from 11 to 7. I think you have kind of a generic noise that I think would fit better, because 11 to 7 is not really quiet time when it comes to music. You have one that's just...
We have a standard that we put in all of them.
Okay.
That way it's...
Zach, where are these campsites compared to the residence? How far are these two pads away from these residents approximately?
The closest residence is what I've been calling the Goat Farm, which is just north of there. So you have to pass by those residences on Bitter Lane to get to where it terminates on the property. And Brian, I'm sorry, I had a measurement that was from their closest residence to the previous main campsite, but I don't have, these camper sites are a little bit closer to their residence. Their residence could be a couple hundred feet or so. The other neighbors that we've talked to, it's still real similar. It's 800 feet up the mountain to the eastern parcel, and then it's 11,000 feet, I think, to the closest one to the south that's accessed on Dodd.
The conditions, as normally happens with the conditional use resolution, they're very specific, listed in the resolution. And if there's any deviation from the specifics listed in the resolution, or if there's a complaint received by the city, then it can come back to the Planning Commission for review.
I'm assuming all those conditions he just read would be what we would contain as conditions in the resolution, with the change of the noise ordinance to make sure it's the same language that we use on all the others.
What is that language?
Well, it's loud and raucous noise, and I have to go, I can't...
Do you remember the hours?
I don't remember the hours, but it's on there.
Does it lack our noise ordinance?
It is. A noise ordinance doesn't have hour-specific when it comes to amplified sound. So I didn't want someone to think they could play loud music until 11 o'clock when...
Yeah.
And we'll use the same language. I can't, there's some things I could quote to you, but that's not what I want to quote to you, because I don't get control. But I do know how to look at it.
Okay. But there's no hours involved in that?
No, not, this would make it broader as far as being able to enforce than what he stated between 11 to 7, which is what we normally do. I just wanted to make it consistent with what we normally do on these.
Just so everyone knows, that's not my target audience, by the way. I'm hoping to get some of these folks that come in with their fancy vans that just want a close, they want onsite parking to the trails.
So what do we have to do since this is a discussion?
Help us with the process here, Ernest, since this was brought back to committee.
Right. Since the council voted to overturn the denial of the conditional use that left you free to recommend a resolution with the conditions as stated, if they're sufficient enough for planning to be able to put those into a resolution, if they're specific enough, that was my only thing I wanted to make sure of, that they were specific enough so they could be enforced.
Would anything go back to the Planning Commission? No. If the committee forwards a resolution to council with these restrictions or conditions, or more or less, or whatever you ultimately decide, that's going to be what the council considers on the 20th, on next Wednesday.
So is the resolution the, what's on, I'm having trouble here.
No, that whatever conditions that you all recommend tonight, that planning staff would put into a resolution that would then be placed on the agenda for the next council meeting.
Okay, so we're not moving a resolution forward?
Well, you would be with those conditions.
The motion would be with the conditions as presented tonight, unless you want to change some of them.
Yeah, well, we'd have to update the change of the noise ordinance. That's about it.
Yeah.
As long as, as long as he understands and the planning understands.
We're just trying to go through the process here.
Zach, on generators, is there a rule on when you can run generators?
That would just fall under the noise ordinance.
So it'd be during quiet time?
Yes.
I mean, like, so it would go along with the noise thing, so what, 7 to 10? Is that what?
They said there wasn't hours to it. But I think it's more of decibels and things, whenever I've had noise complaints brought to me, is that correct?
We, well, we actually, we actually made that easier to enforce years ago, because decimal readers don't pick up base, thumping base, for example. So we made it more of a, that offends someone of reasonable sensibilities, is more the definition of a noise disturbance now. Makes it easier to enforce, not harder, because sometimes you can have a decimal reader, you can hear it plain as day, but it doesn't pick it up. So that's why we have, we prefer that general language.
I anticipate some of those issues, just as running through this process, I've learned a lot, and my plan is to try to deal with those and make sure that everybody's as happy reasonably as possible. There is a power pole there, so if the generators became a problem and I still wanted to move forward with the camper vans there, I could see about having electric hookups.
Do we have anybody that has any comments based off of what y'all have heard tonight? If you could go to the mic, it would be great.
First of all, Zach, thank you for trying to, trying to get to where we're at. I guess I don't have to go over that, because that's already been covered, but...
Ma'am, if you could say your name and address...
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Ramona Latham, and I live at 1840 Dodd Avenue. I am Zach's southern neighbor, one of them. We're several, there's several of us. Anyway, conditional use permits, once granted, are extremely hard to get revoked, as the conditional use permit user usually gets ample warnings in time to alleviate the problems that have been levied against him. So that's why I'm fighting so hard to ask you guys not to allow this to go, because even in Zach's language tonight, he's talking about expanding it. Even though he's reduced it, he's also talking about expanding it, allowing more, because once you put restrooms, electric, you know, for the generators, bathrooms, you're actually expanding it. And that's his thought process. So I'm sure it'll come back to that.
But in fairness, he's also addressing the...
For now.
Well, if he builds a restroom at some point, he's addressed one of the biggest concerns we heard.
It is one, just one of them. That's just one of them, yes. The sanit, that's just one of them, sanitation and trash. Because again, with that, he has to haul it out. Their people have to haul it out. And that was, according to boondockersbible.com, dumping gray water or dumping your grave tank is generally only permitted on Bureau of Land Management lands, but may still be illegal by state laws. Despite that, it's very common for boondockers to dump their gray water on the ground of BLM lands. Portable and composting toilets also need, because not, these vans that Mr. Brothers is talking about, a lot of them don't have installed bathrooms. They're portable toilets or composting toilets, because they're bikers. They come in, they're prepared to bike. Anyway, the composting toilets also need to be cleaned and dumped, and most campers like to do that before they head home. They don't want to take it home with them. Yes, most camping and biking enthusiasts acknowledge rules, apparently. That doesn't mean that it will necessarily follow those rules. So as I see it, this does not alleviate the sanitary, sanitation issues. There's no trash or fecal matter dumping provisions in any of his proposals other than hauling it out. In Mr. Brothers' estimation, all the campers will follow the acknowledgements stated in any of his booking sites, allowing him not to have to make those such provisions that should be necessary in a residential area, because his land is residential and so is mine. There's no provision for protecting private property other than acknowledging, acknowledgement that the campers avoid our private property. We have no privacy from campers, since there's only a rickety falling-down barbed-wire fence on only a partial area of his property. The eastern side of his property, near Fitzgerald Trails, as he's already acknowledged, there is no fencing, and the bike trail actually crosses over into his property. There's no privacy fence or sign stating private property, no trespassing or any of that. And should we decide to build on the northern side of our property, there would be an unsightly view of RVs and his campground, and there is the possibility of noise pollution due to the generators that they'll run. My allergies, I'm sorry. This particular kind of camping can be considered on residential land next to our lands will bring our property values down. There's already people using their properties in our neighborhood that is devaluing our property values, whether they've been allowed by your permission or not, which is very frustrating. And should any of Mr. Brothers' campers find themselves on these hazardous areas, they could possibly be hurt. We want a better neighborhood. We want one we can be proud of, like you're proud of your neighborhoods. Please don't let others, please don't let others come in and use it just because they see it as useful for their agenda. Please help us build our neighborhood with proper facilities like you would want for your neighborhood. And the reason I'm so adamant about my property values is, I think you've seen my son come with me. He's disabled physically and mentally. I'm responsible, my husband is responsible for his future. Our property value is our only investment. We don't have investments throughout Springdale. That is our investment, to provide for his future. So it's really important to us that we guard that future for him, because there'll be nobody but my daughter to take care of him. And without that investment money from however they decide to do with it, that's the only thing that'll help my son. Now, Janet Haley, who's spoken for her family and neighborhood against this conditional use permit, is not able to be here, as she's, they already had previous travel arrangements. But she came up with a list of conditions that she thought should be included and wanted me to make them known to you. And we had it signed by the neighborhood, the ones that aren't, are the ones that are actually following the laws on their property, not the others. Anyway, she, of course, some of them Zach's already answered to, the scope no larger than presented and that kind of thing. She wanted commercial-grade fire extinguishers appropriate for community campfires, need to be fully operational and checked each week, Springdale Fire Department approval of type and capacity, must be within recommended distance from fire based on Springdale Fire Department assessment, community campfires in accordance with Springdale Fire Safety ordinances and burn bands. The restrooms, well, you've already answered those, that you'll look into that. But she wanted a minimum of one portable toilet with appropriate chemical treatment for odor and sanitation service a minimum of once per week, or frequently, or more frequently based on use. A portable toilet placed as far as, and that portable toilet placed as far as possible from Dodd Avenue's neighbors' property. A trash bin for recycled items serviced weekly, one bin for trash serviced weekly, as all of our residents have. And then the property boundaries and privacy. Supply an eight-foot aesthetically appropriate privacy fence on south side of campground property for an boarding, for any boarding property owners that desired the fence. And then other things, provide dumping station for RVs for gray and black water, because they have a very large motorhome, and they, so they know all about that stuff. A signage on website and a campground stating no RV dumping of gray water or black tanks on ground. We believe it's against the law to dump raw sewage anywhere except a septic tank or sewer system. And that is all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else here to speak to this?
Zach, it sounds like some of those things are more of a, at least, not necessarily what Ramona brought, but what Janet mentioned in her, and what Ramona read was more like just making sure people are aware that, you know, is that, and I'll let Jimmy, our Assistant Fire Chief is here, if he needs to speak to the fire extinguisher question and where those are at, how close they need to be, that kind of thing.
And Zach, I have a question too. Not just making people aware, but what are the consequences? So what happens if they do not follow that list? How are they prevented from returning?
So the way it's intended to work is like with the Airbnb platform, when they leave feedback, that will tell other campers whether it's a good place to come or not, and it'll also tell me the things that I need to work on to make sure that everything's okay. I admit that this is a new, this is something new for all of us. I'm just trying to do my best to listen to everybody and make sure it'll work.
The Airbnb thing, does that, because I know with Uber, not only do you rate your driver, but they rate you too.
Right.
Do you get, do you have an opportunity through this app? If somebody just really doesn't follow the rules, do you have an opportunity not only to keep them out of your place, but to let others know how they...
I don't know that half of it. I just know they have the ability to rate me. I don't know if I can rate them yet. I tried to keep up with all those concerns, and I jotted down a few quick notes. On the trespassing concern, there are trails going all over the mountain, so I'm just going to try the best that I can do on my land to make sure they know where the boundaries are. On the property values, I wish that there was someone else that could come in behind me and back me up on this, but I believe all across northwest Arkansas, property values are doing nothing but going up whenever the trails are going by. I feel like the property values on, that's one of the reasons why I bought this property where I did, because I felt like the value would only increase. On the fire issue, I'm sticking with the size that's approved for residential use. I will have a fire extinguisher and the rain barrel, and I'm planning on using this for personal use as well. I mean, so that's one of the reasons why I had that public statement. I wanted everybody to understand that it's, just if you see some tents out there and a campfire going, it's probably going to be me and my family and friends, and maybe church, your church youth groups, things like that. And I'm well within my rights to do that on my own land. And I could certainly add in the rules on the booking platform that there's absolutely no dumping of any waste from an RV. I wouldn't want that, no way.
Yeah, could you make sure that, or could you put that on? This one note you have here says the site is primitive, has no restroom facilities, van campers/RVs must have self-contained toilet options, no dumping, no gray water must be carried out, something like that, whatever terminology you want to be.
Sure, yeah. We, I mean, we can decide whatever language people want right now, if you want. I don't have an RV, so is no gray water, no waste?
There is no dumping at that site.
No, just no dumping.
Empty their tanks, yeah. No emptying tanks at that site.
Okay. My hope is that with the RVs, then if trash became an issue, I'd start a trash service out there. I'm just, I've talked about this quite a bit. I'm trying to start off really, really small, so that I can see how it all works and get the operations down. And I think that with RVs only, it'll be a lot easier with trash, because whatever little trash they have, they can just take it out in their van with them. And as far as the size of this thing, I don't, obviously, if I decided to, if I get this and I decided to try to go back with some tent platforms or something like that, I'd, we'd go back through the same process again, so everybody would have the ability to do what we're doing.
It'd be a conditional use.
Yeah, it would come back, right.
He couldn't deviate from any of the conditions without getting approval, or he would be technically in violation of the conditional use permit.
And anyone who has a complaint can also ask for hearing of the conditions, some of these I've been met. It's through the same process, we know filings, it's protocols, and the applicant has to go through the same process if there are complaints or issues that need to be resolved.
If I may speak for a minute, Zach, I appreciate your changes. That helps alleviate some of my concern. You know, the main, one of the main reasons I'm against this, and I was against this the other night, is that I feel like in an SF2 zoning, you're zoned SF2, your neighbor's zoned SF2, you're afforded certain assurances that, you know, you're not going to get a campsite next to you. That's why I love camping. I'm boondocking right now down in South Arkansas, but I'm in a 100,000-acre forest, okay? I feel like if you're building this next to my SF2 property, I would want, I'd be sitting in this seat right here, and I know that you know exactly what I'm talking about, just because that's not really what I would expect next to my SF2 neighborhood. And I still feel that way. And I appreciate you changing what you did, because I think that that is going to be more beneficial. I didn't want porta-potties out there, because porta-potty means it's a temporary deal, and it's not fully thought out, and it's not, you know, that's for construction sites and things of that nature, in my opinion. So I do like what you've done. You know, I just want to let you know that.
Appreciate that. And if anybody hasn't, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I mean, Zach's not asking for anything that's not allowed in the zoning ordinance itself. An SF2 zone allows, as a conditional use, a use unit four, which is... An SF2 zone allows as a conditional use, a use unit four, which is cultural, recreational and health facilities, and a recreational facility as a campground. So he's not going beyond the scope of what the ordinance allows it to do. If we don't want that to happen in an SF2 zone, then we need to go back and change the ordinance. It's not, he's not over, asking for anything that the ordinance wouldn't allow, though. I want to clear that up.
I agree, I agree, but I mean, me personally, I don't think that it should be in there.
Well.
And all SF2 zones are not, there's a wide variety when we look at SF2 zones.
I know.
And use unit four is allowed in a lot of, a lot of zones because it's cultural, it's recreational, it's health facilities, and as a use unit four, let me, let me read you what a use unit four is, and that may be where we've got an issue, that we need to go back and address the ordinance itself. But that's, that's, it's been that way since I've been here. This is not something that's come up just, just recently. A use unit four as a cultural, well, as soon as my phone decides to help. Cultural recreation and health facilities when served the residents of the community, these uses are typically, typically public in nature, but may also be private. Included uses are cultural and recreational facilities typical of public and private parks, community health facilities and hospitals. The specific uses, adult daycare, art gallery, auditorium, bed and breakfast, campground, childcare center, country club or lodge, cultural recreational facility, day camp, dormitory, golf course, museum, nursery school, residential care facility, tennis court, theater, legitimate, whatever that is, water recreation area and zoo. Those are in the ordinance itself, so maybe the, that use unit is too broad or we have it in too many areas, but I just want everybody to know that Zach wasn't asking for something that's not already allowed in the ordinance.
Sure, I, I agree too, but we're also doing exceptions for parking campers on grass or gravel that, and that's another ordinance in Springdale that we're going around. So I, I think when you're thinking about a camping site, you're thinking about, when I think about a camping site, I think about concrete driveway and sewer system and water, running water, things of that nature, so.
And we have, and Randall, to your point, we have worked with several businesses to allow them, especially when they're starting up, to allow them some grace in how to, you know, as, as they're seeing if it's even going to work.
Sure.
But in the, but in the conditional use permissible on appeal, it says in unit four
that the facilities which serve the residents of the community, I don't feel like campers coming in to the property is serving the residents of the community.
Well, it could, they could, they could.
Well, they could.
They could sign up just like anyone else.
They could, but that's not the purpose.
I'll, I'll say one more thing, since I've got the mic and I can. I, I wish everybody had an opportunity to, to drive out there and, and step foot on the side. For me, it's, it's a matter of perspective. It, it happened, it is SF2, but it just happens to be a piece of property that's on a, it's on a, the side of a mountain that has world-class mountain bike trails running through it, so that's why we have conditional use hearings, I guess, because sometimes things, they, sometimes that makes sense.
In writing all those definitions we did before, camps, camping and related establishments means an area or tract of land on which accommodations for temporary occupancy are located or may be placed, including cabins, tents and major recreational equipment, and which is primarily used for recreational purposes and retain an open air or natural character. That's what the definition is, so we did cover that in definitions.
So, under the conditions listed on today's agenda, along with the change of the noise ordinance that reflects the city's current applicable ordinance, in addition to having a no dumping of any waste sign, I move that this gets forwarded to council with no recommendation. And that would be next Wednesday at eighteen hundred, six PM, correct?
Correct.
Second.
So we've got a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. So that will get forwarded to council next Wednesday at six PM, and again, that's with no recommendation, if you guys would like to join us.
Which I, I think makes sense with three, three council members going tonight, yeah.
So the resolution would be direct, and it'll be in the package, so you'll have to see what the resolution is.
And the public will too, yeah.
And again, with these two added conditions that we discussed as well. So that concludes the committee of the whole. I'll open this up to the finance committee. I think Amelia Chalde Williams has taken this one.
Thank you, Kevin. I'm going to open finance committee, and we have a real, resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a professional services agreement with BKD LLP and Disaster Recovery Services LLC for accounting services associated with American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA funds received by the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and this will be presented by Colby Fulford, Chief of Staff. Colby?
First of all, I'm going to propose for an extension onto our microphone system here. Well, we finally received our American Rescue Plan funds and we're going to be ready to put those to good use for our community with council's approval. I've met with all of you individually and discussed a little bit of American Rescue Plan funding. We've got three resolutions that I'm going to be presenting tonight, and the first one we're going to discuss is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a professional services agreement with BKD and Disaster Recovery Services, also known as DRS, if you hear me refer to it as that. The city of Springdale is going to be receiving over twenty-one million dollars from the federal government in American Rescue Plan funding. It's coming in two tranches. The first tranche we've already received this past spring, and it is about ten point six million dollars. There is an opportunity for us to partner with these two companies. BKD, some of you may recognize that name. They handle all of our audits for the city of Springdale. They're very, they're very familiar with our finances. In fact, you get a copy of the audit every year in your Dropbox. They're intertwined in, in what we do in the city, and so we felt like it was important. If we're going to partner with someone, to partner with someone who understands Springdale and understands our finances that we can trust, you wouldn't believe the number of consultants that have popped up now that the government has sent out trillions of dollars. And so we want to partner with people that we trust. That's why we chose BKD. Our finance director, Laura Favorite, she, I'll say this, and this is something we're going to try to address in the budget. We are understaffed in our finance department, accounting department, and when you throw twenty-one million dollars onto a city, considering we have fifty-five million dollars coming into the city, that's a huge amount of money. We're understaffed in that department, so we felt like we could partner with BKD and a parent company to them, which is DRS, to help us with our accounting and our compliance. So this is going to be a habitual process where we continue to go to them whenever we have ideas that are presented to us. So we wanted to enter into a professional services agreement with them so that we don't have to hire more staff at the city. And so we actually have some corrections to make on those contracts, and we'll bring those to the council should this get forwarded. The first thing that we want to do is enter into that agreement with them. I've already read the resolution to you. If you have any questions about it, I'll be happy to answer them.
Colby, can you talk about the liability that BKD takes on legally or financially through this?
Ernest would probably be able to answer that a little bit better than I would on the legal side of things.
I'm sure they have errors and emissions insurance, and, and I don't know, Colby said that they're also paid out of ARPA funds. This isn't coming out of the general fund at all, but I'm sure they have errors and errors and emissions insurance.
Do we know how much that's going to cost?
Well, it depends on how much we use them. We wanted to enter into an hourly agreement with them so that we're not paying someone for something they don't do. We did put a price not to exceed a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We don't think we're going to come anywhere near that, but we just didn't want to keep bringing it to you every week if someone had an idea, so that's, that's our cap and we don't expect to be anywhere near that. But that does come out of the American Rescue Plan funds, not our, our general fund.
Move the resolution be forwarded with recommendation for approval.
Second.
Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, just, where, are we going to put that cap anywhere in the resolution, or is that going to be just included in contracts, individual contracts we do with them?
Yeah, it should be in the contract. Both of the contracts will have that amount to you.
Okay.
And I believe, I have to double check, I believe it may be in the resolution. If not, then we will have that before you on the, on the council meeting, but it is capped at a hundred and fifty thousand.
It's, there's, there are phases involved, so it's not all in one.
Okay, we have a motion for the resolution to go to council with a recommendation for approval. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Our next resolution is a resolution designating a portion of American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA funds received by the city of Springdale, Arkansas, as lost revenue in accordance to the guidance provided by the United States Treasury. Colby?
Yeah, the US Treasury has categorized ARPA funds in what they require you to use the funds for. Public health, negative economic impacts, premium pay, revenue loss and investments in water, sewer and broadband. Cities that use their funding out of those, that guidelines from the US Treasury will have to pay those funds back. That's one of the reasons we also want to use BKD and DRS to make sure that we're doing things correctly. They did come out with a calculation that you could count all of the losses in your revenue compared to what you budgeted for 2020. We were actually really surprised at the, this figure of over nine million dollars. When actually, when Laura ran through the calculation through the accounting department, she said, I don't even want to tell you how much this is, but we're going to cross-reference it with the Arkansas Municipal League and with BKD. So BKD was willing to look at it for us for free, and they all verified the amount. And so this amount that you see in the resolution, it's a little over nine million dollars. We would like to designate this as lost revenue. Whenever we do that, it takes a lot of the restrictions off of the funding that we could use it basically for city services, the same way we operate with our other funds. The only two main restrictions with lost revenue is you cannot pay debt with, with lost revenue funds and you can't pay pensions with it. But this would allow us to, to spend the money a little more freely, and all this falls under the lost revenue, revenue loss category by the US Treasury.
So it would be kept, it, it's kept in a separate account, its own account, so we track it separately. We still have the same time limitations on how, how quickly, how it needs, when it needs to be spent.
Right. So this money will have to be allocated into, by 2024 and spent by 2026, or it goes back to the federal government. We do have an account already with the first tranche of funds in it. It's the American Rescue Plan Fund here for the city. We can't take that, the lost revenue out of that account, it has to remain in that account, but it has, it will now have a designation to it as lost revenue.
So in the future, when we bring things forward to the council to be paid for out of ARPA funds, we'll be able to tell them whether we're asking that it be taken out of lost revenue or out of the regular American Rescue Plan funds.
Right, and, and just like every month when I give you a financial update on the city, we report how much we have in our general fund. It's undesignated and unreserved. We'll also give you an update on where we are in our American Rescue Plan Fund and the designated lost revenue fund.
I move that this gets forwarded to council. This resolution gets forwarded to council with a recommendation of approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Are there any other questions or comments? Okay, then. I just lost my train of thought. All, so all those in favor, thank you. So all of those in favor of moving this to council with a recommendation for approval, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay. The next resolution is to authorize hazard pay from the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA lost revenue funds for police and fire department staff that have been and remain in direct contact with the public during the COVID-19 pandemic.
So this is something the mayor, we've been discussing this for a couple of months now. We were waiting to see what happened with the lost resident, lost revenue designation. In 2020, the federal government, instead of ARPA, they handed out the CARES Act funding. The state of Arkansas got one point two, I believe one point two five billion dollars. And one of the things they wanted to do with that funding is to give a pay amount of two thousand dollars to all EMS and all paramedics across the state. And there was a significant number of our fire department employees that qualified for that amount of money. With our lost revenue fund, with your approval tonight, has over nine million in it now, we would also like to do something for our police department for those who are actively working with the public. There were numerous occasions where, when there's a call of distress that goes out, police are also on the scene just as quickly as the fire department are, and sometimes they're there before. And one of the things about the Springdale Police and Fire that I think was so important is, you know, going into this pandemic, we didn't know what we were walking into. And the government was shut down, shut businesses down, and our, our men and women, without knowing really how deadly this is going to be, which really impacted Springdale and some of our communities, they still responded to every call. When nine-one-one was called, they still went out, the police and the fire. So not only do we want to honor them for what they've done since the pandemic started, but what they're going to continue to do, I mean, through the Delta variant. We don't know what other variants might come up, and they're going to continue to go on the front lines, you know? And I, I was thinking about putting myself in their shoes and thinking of responding to a call and then having to go home, not knowing your exposure. Some of them have a spouse at home or kids and wondering, what are we taking home? And they, they still went out every single day and responded to every call, and this is the city's way through the administration to say thank you to them. So we wanted to match the two thousand dollars for those officers, and then we also wanted to give a one thousand dollar amount on top of that to the police and also the fire, the paramedics and EMS that already received the two thousand. So the amount that you see is up to six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in hazard pay to say thank you to those police and fire workers.
I move the resolution be forwarded with recommendation for approval.
Second.
And just real quick, so I think I asked this last time, but I couldn't remember. This will come before the holidays, right? How, how soon will they get this payment?
As soon as you vote yes.
Yes.
It'll, it'll go to council. It'll, it'll go to council next Wednesday, and, and then once that's done, we will get our accounting department on top of that. We, we would like to, that was one of the discussions the mayor and I had had, is we want, we want to do this before the holidays for them.
Did you say how much this was per person? Did I miss that?
It's going to be three thousand dollars to the police workers and then one thousand to those fire department workers who have already received two thousand from the state of Arkansas.
And that not to exceed number, that's six seventy-five, that's got a little cushion in it, but we think it'll be well below that.
We have a motion in a second to forward this resolution to council with a recommendation for approval. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay. Move on to the next resolution. The resolution authorizing the expenditure of funds to acquire a portion of land from the Lynetta M. Blevins Trust for the Dixie Land Road Street Project, Apple Blossom to Wagon Wheel Road, project number one-eight, BPS one-four. Do we have somebody here to talk, Ernest?
Thank you. This, this is one we're trying to resolve without having to file eminent domain proceedings. The estimate, city's estimate of compensation is three hundred and forty-seven thousand six hundred dollars. This is a rather large taking. The property owner has extended a counter offer to settle for a total of four hundred thousand dollars, which is an additional fifty-two thousand four hundred. I did speak with the city's appraiser about this. She believed that this was a reasonable settlement and it would raise the per square foot value from a dollar ten to a dollar nineteen per square foot. So it didn't, with it being such a large taking, it doesn't take much to increase the dollar amount. Mr. Watkins is here representing the property owner, if you have any questions. This is, my understanding, this is the last bit of property that needs to be acquired for this project.
You have any comments, Bill?
I have any questions, man. I make a motion to forward the resolution to council with recommendation of approval.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Opposed, same sign. Next, we have a resolution authorizing the city attorney to settle a condemnation lawsuit. We're in David Arthur and Sharon. Arthur, our defendants.
Thank you. This is on the Fortieth Street project. I believe this is the, we, we've already acquired the property, but it's the last outstanding case that we have on this project. The city's estimate of compensation was $6,850. The property owners agreed to settle for an additional $5,000, which in essence will be a cost of obtaining an appraisal in our expert witness fee.
Make a motion forward the resolution to council with recommend, recommendation of approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to move to council with a recommendation for approval. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Next, we have a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an addendum to a railroad crossing easement agreement with the Arkansas and Missouri Railroad Company, AMRR, as part of the Maple Avenue Extension, project 18BPS2.
As, as you all know, as part of the Maple Avenue Extension Project, the new railroad crossing was constructed at the city paid for, and as you know, that crossing is not open, and we have been working with the railroad in working up an addendum to the railroad crossing easement agreement whereby the city's requirement of having to post insurance for that crossing will be removed, and instead, that money could be reinvested in existing crossings to make those safer for our residents. And the railroad is agreeable with the addendum that you see that's attached to the resolution. The railroad has stated that they are acceptable with these terms. Now answer any questions, you know. It'll get the crossing opened.
What kind of timeframe would that be doing? How fast would we be getting into that?
As soon as this resolution, if it's approved by council, I guess we would work with the railroad, getting the agreement executed, and then we'll be ready. We've already talked with James Smith. Part of this agreement, as you all know, is to close Cottle, the Cottle Crossing, simultaneous with, with the opening of Maple. And James is, he, he's, he and his folks will be ready to do that with concrete barriers. Now later, there will be more that needs to be done, but, but to close, but to close it, when we open Maple, we'll put the barriers up, and then we'll go back and, and close it properly later with the removal of the road and that kind of thing. So it could be pretty quick, Mark.
We'll be closing probably the most dangerous crossing and opening the safest crossing.
Oh, I understand that, but the people that are used to using Cottle's crossing, with there being kind of signage, pre-communication put out, saying this is kind of, give them a week or something.
We'll do things on our website. I don't know what else, what other, you know, certainly that could, that can be shared, but we'll, the newspaper will do something, I'm sure. They'll have this story. But as far as knowing when, when we know exactly when we were going to do it, then we'll, we'll put it out the best, we'll send out press release, put it out the best we can, and then, of course, press releases are only as good as those that pick them up and do something with them, but.
Maybe we could get the water department to put it out with the bills, like they do other notifications.
I just want to say, I appreciate the railroad's willingness to, I know it took, it took a while to get this, to this point, but I appreciate the railroad's willingness to, to work for the city, to make our existing crossings safer.
Yeah, this is a, this is a much better use of this money, and, and we're thankful that, you know, they negotiated well with us, even though it did take a while, they, we kept moving forward, and I believe we've gotten to a good place now where, where we're spending this money the best way possible to, to help our residents.
You, you make a good point, Ernest, and I'm glad we're saving the city a lot of money through avoiding the entrance aspect of this. But I've stated my concern with this is the increased traffic through these neighborhoods. And kind of goes with the notice aspect of Cottle over there. Anything we can do with reducing speed limits, something just specifically through.
Oh, you're talking about on Maple?
Maple.
Well, it's, it, the, the, the street's pretty, it was constructed in such a way that it, it's going to hold speed down just because of the width of the street. I mean, it's, it's full two lanes of traffic, but it, it's not.
Granted, I mean, this, ten years from now, that could look different, but.
Yeah, if, if we have a problem with that, we'll address it the way we do with other, other streets. Police department can, can watch it. They can put up their trailer with the speed lamp, with speed on it, their radar trailer, they can, we can do certain things. I don't, I don't think we're going to want to do, entertain anything like speed tables or anything like that, because that is, that will be one of the main routes of the fire department to the east. They won't have to, they, for, in most cases, they won't have to go down Holcomb to the Meadow, then to Commercial, and so, so it's, it, but then again, we've got, we've got some new styles of speed tables that, that engineering has, that we're going to try and use, so, you know, who knows? A speed table could be in the future on, on Maple, but I, I don't think so. Let's see if we've got a problem, and, and I think, I think you're going to see a lot of other development happening in those areas, residential development. And my, my hope is that this, the sudden closure of Cottle will be a short, short-term pain while, while other things, while other routes are developed.
Is there any way we could have our public works department put up a sign on each side of the railroad track, just saying this crossing will be closed, give at least two weeks' notice, and that way, people driving through there will see that this is going to be closed? Plus, do a public service announcement.
With a date on it? We can put it up as soon as we know a date.
We can put something up that says this, this, this crossing will be closed in the near future, and then, once we know a date, throw a date up on there, just to let people know, some advance warning, some advance notice.
Let's see if we can get with the railroad and find a date. I'd rather have the date on there when we put the signs up.
Absolutely.
So let's see what we can do there. I think we're assuming that this is going to get passed next Wednesday night, if y'all forwarded tonight. And, but let Ernest have some conversations with the railroad, and let us have some conversations with Public Works, and see when a reasonable, when a time that we're comfortable that we can have this done. And, and we can sure do that, Brian. I, I'm confident we can give people at least two weeks.
I move this be forwarded to council with recommendation for approval.
Second.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, this resolution has a motion to move to council with a recommendation for approval. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And then we're going to the resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a memorandum of agreement with the Arkansas Natural Resources Commission pertaining to costs associated with the decommission and remediation of wastewater treatment facilities in the territory formerly known as Bethel Heights, and assuming the payment of said costs by the Springdale Water and Sewer Commission, presented by Heath Ward.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Basically, what this is, is memorandum of understanding. The Water and Sewer Commission is, is approved a similar resolution, and basically, the city council must also approve this resolution for the memorandum of understanding for the mayor to execute, which, just to sum it up, basically takes the city of Springdale off the hook for paying back this money, and puts the Water and Sewer Commission on the hook for paying back this money pertaining to the work being done in Bethel Heights, essentially, which also includes the $1 million of principal forgiveness money. So we're basically getting $3 million for the price of $2 million at an interest rate of 1% over 10 years, which I think is a really good, a really good deal. And then we can account for and put all that money in one little bucket to both clean up Bethel Heights and, and improve the sewer system up there, not just for the residents up there, but also ensures future growth for us in that no man's land that used to be between Springdale and, and Bethel Heights.
So what's the extent of the cleanup, Heath? Just a generalization?
Well, our, our estimate is that the biggest cost of the cleanup is going to be just the removal of the pods that are there, the pods that used to be, I call, I'll just call them settling pods. They're basically plastic pods that are out there. And then there's several underground vessels that we're going to either have to remove or we're going to have to clean out, and we're going to have to fill those. Once we remove those objects or we fill them to satisfy the state, what we will then do is go back and do all the dirt work to basically return that land to where it can go back to any use. That's our goal. And since they've been laying fallow for quite some time, you know, bacteria and things like that shouldn't be a big concern, and of course, we'll test it, but I, I think whatever's been out there is probably long gone. God and sunshine take care of a lot of that. But we will return it back to, the city of Springdale will then have that land, and we will then come back to the council, asking for a carve-out, I think of two or three acres up by the old Bethel City Hall where that building is, where we will keep some equipment on site and stored there for emergency use. But that's basically the goal, and once we're done, we plan on, unless somebody wants that building there that's been half full of sewage before we plan on, maybe the fire department would like it to train on, because that's about all it's good for. So, and, and that should take care of it and restore it to a state where it can be used for anything. The city can decide to sell it or whatever, and we'll make sure that all those sites are noted on a deed, so in perpetuity, whoever does buy the property does understand that at one time this was a site, and there are vessels underneath that are filled, and that's, that should, that should cover it, and that should return it back to some kind of public or private use.
I move the resolution be forwarded recommendation for approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to move to council with a recommendation for approval. All of those, all of those for it, please say aye.
Aye.
Again, same sign. Our last resolution is a resolution designating and authorizing the mayor and executive director of Springdale Water Utilities to execute certain documents in connection with funding administered by the Arkansas Natural Resources Commission.
All right, thank you again. Once again, if the resolution that leaves the Water and Sewer Commission on the hook for the expenses of paying back the special loan that we're getting from ANRC for that area, the second thing simply authorizes me to, to authorize things like pay estimates, reimbursement requests, that kind of thing for those monies. Because the way it's going to be set up is I turn that in, otherwise, I'd be coming to the mayor every other week for whatever, but it basically allows the Water and Sewer Commission through me to administer those funds and account for them.
I move the resolution be forwarded recommendation for approval.
Second. We have a motion in a second to move to council with a recommendation for approval. All those for it, please say aye.
Aye.
Again, same sign.
I say thank you, and we'll keep you updated on Bethel Heights, but right now, everything's going to stay status quo as it is, because there's a little bit extra bureaucracy that goes with free money sometimes, and so things will be slow going, but we will get there, and we'll keep the council informed. Thank you.
That closes Finance Committee.
Congratulations, everybody. You got through a long agenda in pretty, pretty good time. Yeah. Had three less people to ask questions, but.
And I'd like to remind everybody that we will not, we've moved the meeting.
Right, thank you. Yeah, the next city council meeting will be a week from this Wednesday, the 27th. That's right. At same time, 6:00 PM.
All right.
Thank you.